Good evening. Oh my God, it's good to see you all full. We're gonna start tonight with the prayer led by Councilman Copeland. For those who would like to participate, please do so.
If you'd like to participate, please follow your head. Gracious Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you for another opportunity for us as citizens and leaders of the community to come together to work on the progress and the future of our great city. Father, we ask that you, God, give us grace, give us wisdom, give us insight and give us wisdom on how to do and what to do as we progress and show love and make great and wise decisions that will impact our whole city. Father, we ask, oh God, that you touch those citizens, our city workers. We ask that you touch our council, each and every council member, oh God, that they will have grace and they will have peace and they will have wisdom as we continue to move forward. We give you all glory, honor, and praise, and we pray this in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Again, good evening. This is a public meeting and the audience is asked to remain quiet, refrain from speaking, interruption, and otherwise disrupting the meeting. I'd like to do a quick reminder, and I did do it, you can guarantee the council people got on me, I need everybody to silence their phone. Also, some of us might have to silence our computers, she might have had it up. All electronic devices, please, audience included, please silence them. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Present.
Councilmember Ostash.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Protem Balls is excused, and Mayor Moore.
Present.
All right, you have eight present and one absent.
Okay. Do we have any announcements?
Just one this evening. The Council Communication for Consent Agenda, item number nine, has been revised just to correct a typo in the manager's recommendation.
Okay. I'd like to welcome those who have signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we won't miss what you're trying to say. You'll be called to the podium by the city clerk. Speakers will have three minutes, and that's your limit, which at what time the clerk will let you know that your time is up. Remember, we need to remain courteous for and respectful to the members of the public and also to those watching on SGTV and to the council so that we can give consideration, serious considerations to your concern. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Larry Breathour.
Good evening, city council, city manager, attorney for the city, and the big crowd. Got a couple people, I'm from Friends of Hoyt Park, and got some couple people that have been helping a lot at the Hoyt Park. Tom is not in the room, I guess. Elja is our foreman at the park. Chico Ramos represents Saginaw Intermediate School District in collaborations with us. And so just want to give a little background, and the folders that I pass out, those are pictures of some of the things that we need done at the park. Some of them are hazards, and we're worried about somebody getting hurt down there, so we can't really stall it off too much longer. And the lower road is a mess, as you can see from the pictures. But Friends of Hoyt Park has raised over $2.5 million for Hoyt Park restoring, repairing, buying pieces of equipment, 30-by-50 pole barn put up, maintaining and either running or hosting year-round activities and events with the emphasis on inner-city youth. Our board is 100% volunteer. We do have to hire people to run things and events and programs are expensive. I know the emphasis is on our youth, and the reason for that is I know firsthand what it's like to be a poor kid in a city of Saginaw. I grew up by Saginaw High School, six in her family and a dad that didn't make a bunch of money, and so it's my way to give back to the community. We have very successful programs that we either host or we run, and a couple of them have actually been put on by the mayor, Brenda Moore, packed the park with her events. So baseball, softball, kickball, skating, sledding, food giveaways, couple different places, Mayor Moore was one of them, Easter giveaways, trunk and treat, community events, run-walk, numerous other events, and of course, the zoo without which, where would they park if they didn't have Hoyt Park? So we're a major vehicle for them, too. And then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, quite a few weekends, we've had tournaments. That brings in revenue for all over the city of Saginaw. They go west-side eating, they buy gas here, and then we make some revenue by charging them to rent the diamonds. We'd like to, one of our goals is to fix up the upstairs office, too, and then we want to do learning and education up there.
I need a motion. It's a motion on the floor. Do I hear second? Do I hear second? Do I hear second? Motion is dead. Mr. Brett Pousa, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You just, come back and see me. Come back and see me. I'd love to see you. Come on back and see me again.
Our next speaker is Armando Ramos. Do we have Armando?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Armando Ramos. I'm a business agent for local 1098 out of Saginaw, Michigan. I'm a small business owner, Tony's Takeout on South Michigan. I just wanted to speak about this funding. You know, we're trying to do a lot here in Saginaw, and I know it's overwhelming. Born and raised here, I'm 48 years old, gonna be 49 this year. I want to speak about the MAC, the Mexican-American Council. That's what changed my life. When I was 15 years old, that man came to me, got me off the streets, and I had a place to go, which we have nowhere to go right now. We got crimes ridiculous in Saginaw right now. I didn't even know my brother was here fighting for Hoyt Park. We need to get the funding for Hoyt Park. That's all we got. You know, the parks, places to go, the MAC. We want to teach kids, if there's a place to go, they can go somewhere. I know there's other places, but not everybody can get to everywhere. I'm fighting for the MAC is because I was born and raised, and I was a person that needed help, and Bobby came out of nowhere and helped me, gave me a chance, gave my sister, older sister, a chance. She's no longer with us, but I'm gonna keep the fight going. I'm gonna do whatever it takes to get the education we need at the MAC so I can help them. I'm a leader. I'm a business agent for the union. I put 20 guys, 20 women and men to work this week. We're hurting for people to go to work. If we can get this MAC open, get computers in there, educate them, get them off the streets, crime is taking over Saginaw. When are we gonna stop and give money to where it needed? We've got churches that do a lot, and they're not recognized. I mean, a lot of these churches are willing to help, but we gotta give them funding. They need help. I know this is, we're constantly saying the same thing, but I ain't gonna stop. I'm gonna keep repeating what I'm saying. We need your help. Please find it in your heart to help us. We're crying to you guys, we need help, and I'm a voice, and I'm not gonna, I'm gonna come to every meeting if I have to and speak to you. I know everybody on here. I love you guys. Just please help us. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daniel Soza.
Good evening, councilmembers, city managers, city attorney, chief Ruth in the back, staff and everybody here tonight. Came to you tonight to talk about the ARPA funding. I'm sure a lot of people are coming to speak to you about that. I'm sure there's no shortage of projects that you've been asked to support over this last year. But I'd like to ask you tonight to invest in projects that build this community up. Much like Mr. Ramos said, there's a lot of community centers, community-oriented programs, CBOs, community-based organizations is another term for them. Those are what make a city a place that people want to live or move to. I was fortunate, I grew up in a time here in Saginaw in the 1980s. Nobody's gonna tell me that crime is worse now than it was then, okay? In the 1980s, though, there was community-based organizations in every neighborhood in this town, and over the last 40 years, we've seen them disappear. Now, some of that you'd expect with the population loss that we've had, but we've gotta go in the other directions. First Ward, the MAC, our volunteer with the MAC, hopefully over the last few years, you've seen some of the great programming that they've done at the center. It's just been amazing. Every single person there is a volunteer. What could they do if they had staff? You know, the Boys and Girls Clubs, there's one center here in town. So many of those programs would make Saginaw more attractive and really help with a lot of the problems that we face in this community if we help build them up. Now, in this town, like I said, I was fortunate because I've seen it when those things were everywhere. But over the course of the pandemic years, if there's one thing we learned during that time, it's that community centers, community-based organizations, I mean, we can't invest in them enough. Look at the role that they played during that time. Where did people go when they needed places to get information about the vaccine, to get tested, to get boosted, to get vaccinated, for food distributions? We turned to them during that time because people need community spaces. That's how you make a community a community. And in a lot of places in Saginaw, we just don't have that community feel. You don't feel like the neighborhoods that I grew up in. That's where I think those funds need to go. That's where I think money needs to be invested in, and I know you have a tough decision to make, but I hope this helps. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jamie Forbes.
Good evening, Mayor Moore, councilmembers, Manager Morales, and staff. I'm Jamie Forbes, Director of External Affairs, and I speak tonight on behalf of STARS in support of the creation of a single-entity local historic district for the Flint and Pierre Marquette Potter Street Station. A few weeks ago, at STARS, we began work with Spicer on a feasibility study to investigate sites of expansion for the agency, including the potential redevelopment of the historic Potter Street Station into a multimodal transportation hub. There is much more to learn ahead in the process, but it's clear that the designation you are deciding on tonight could very well open up opportunities for redevelopment and potential grant funds that could make this project possible. At STARS, we celebrate the history of this building, and we would seek to respect the past and any potential redevelopment. I've also been moved by the dedication of the group of people involved in the Saginaw Depot Preservation Corporation who own the building. We all know how hard it is to get people to take action on something that they care about, but imagine keeping that momentum for 32 years. The creation of this historic district would be a recognition of their tremendous efforts. One cannot underestimate the importance of Potter Street Station to our community, its history, its beauty, the neighborhood where it is located, and the struggles that they've experienced. This designation is a step in the direction of bringing this structure back to its former glory. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Albert Jimenez.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, councilpersons and then manager. Hello. I'm Alberto Jimenez. I work and live here. I was born here in Saginaw, not raised, sorry. But I volunteer my time. I don't get paid for anything that I do within the city. When I go clean your empty lots, when I go and do things in the city to improve where I live for my neighbors, I volunteer my time. When I started volunteering with the Union Civic Americana and the Mexican-American Council, all I asked from them was that I need art back in our culture. Our kids are losing. They don't know what an Aztec calendar is. That's our history. So I provide art classes at the Mexican-American Council for our youth and then any youth in the Great Lakes Bay region. To keep going, we ask local businesses for funding. People donate food for these kids to eat. The Soup Kitchen came out and gave us food to feed the kids that were at our program. We have been, I've been always going to the MAC and making sure that the kids always have something to drink, something to eat, a paintbrush, a canvas, and something so they can go home when they're dealing with things in the world, that they can read, write poems, listen to music, create stuff, just so they can have a better life in the future so they're not stuck, because art is so important, and we need it here in Saginaw, and we need it here at the Mexican-American Council. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Megan Cottington Heath.
Mayor Moore, esteemed council, thank you for having me today. My name is Megan Cottington Heath. I know that's a long last name. Just remember the Heath bar on the end, and you're halfway there. I'm speaking tonight because I am a candidate for 10th Tudistel Court in this county. I made it through a five-way primary, and I want to thank anyone in this room who supported me because I can tell you it means a lot to me every time I hear someone supported or voted for me. We worked hard for those votes. We knocked on 7,000-plus doors for those votes. I'm here tonight to introduce myself to the rest of the county. I know there's a lot of people here for ARPA and other things, so I will be quick. I'm running for this position because it's a family law position, and I have practiced family law for 12 years. My parents had a nasty divorce, and I don't want to see that happen to other kids. I'm the most experienced, practicing for 12 years, which is more than the other candidate, whether she says she's more experienced or not. I'd also like to say tonight that this race is bigger than me. It is bigger than all of us. We found out the hard way what happens when judges are elected and make decisions we don't like, and you know, those judges don't appear out of nowhere. They start at this level, at the state and local level, so please research your judges. Please don't just look at pictures. I am in the trenches, standing behind and next to my clients, arguing with judges for their positions. I'm not standing next to them saying you should vote for me. So please, research your judges. Please make good decisions, our county, our state, our country. I know that sounds like it's hyperbolic, but it's not. It counts on good decisions on voting for judges. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Raymond De León.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Good evening, city manager. Mayor, te miras muy chula. I mean, I told her that she looked very beautiful tonight. Inclusion. Inclusion in our community is very important to everybody to know today, that we want to be at the table. Why? As you heard, the reasons of many of my people and the support that I got today, that we're here for a reason to make sure you understand as leaders of our community, councilmen and people of our community, the promises that you made as you were running as a councilman to our community, is that I'm facing the reality of people who are struggling, young people, landlords who are putting $875 as rent, $1,000, consumer powers, water turn off, everything of the above that means a lot to my people that can't get a job. Listen to what I'm saying. You don't get these calls, I do, and it hurts because I don't have that money. So we decided in the long run that we would actually put a proposal together to actually start looking at the idea of the future, the future of technology, skilled trades, and number one, education, where today we have strong relationships between Saginaw Valley and Delta College. We're ready. We're ready to move to the future, but I can't do it without the idea of you guys believing that that center that we have is not a center of selling tacos. It's not a center. It's a center of trying to make people believe that we can provide answers for them and also get them ready for the future. You will hear about our proposal in a few minutes, but again, I'm reaching out to you today to really look at the Mexican-American Council, what it's done in 32 years or 30 years, the idea that we've been part of this community for that long, and we have paid many, many depths to what O'Neill and everybody did by giving us the Mexican-American Council. That's the only thing you guys ever gave us, ever. But again, we're not going to let down Father Shabel, or we're not gonna let down Dan Sosa, Jr. We are going to move forward with you. Please include us, the idea, think about us when you look at our proposal, and please support us. Thank you. And I'd like to thank, again, all the support I got today. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Karen Webster.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and to the Mayor Protem in his absence and city manager. My name is Karen Lawrence Webster, and I stay at 219 Superior in Saginaw on the southwest side of the city of Saginaw. I didn't know I was coming down tonight during the midst of all of the requests for different funding, but I guess it's more, it's appropriate. I grew up on 10th and Walnut, and I've lived in four different places in the city of Saginaw. My career, my family, and my public work allows me to drive through our city. My husband is city councilperson Michael Webster, and he enjoys taking pictures of what I would say the nicer side of the city of Saginaw, and I do enjoy his pictures. But there is a bad side, and unfortunately, for the last couple of months, I've been, I guess, a privilege or not, to drive through those bad parts. And I'm trying to figure out how are we going to attract people to our city when we have so much blight? Not only our streets, I'm afraid to walk down the street or ride a bike down certain streets, I'm afraid to ride my car down certain streets. So a couple of days ago, I thought I made a mistake coming from out of drive trying to get to St. Mary's by taking Perkins, but it wasn't a mistake. It was meant for me to go down that street. I went through my old neighborhood, 10th and Walnut. I intentionally drove around. Six and Cherry, Burt. I'm not gonna say it looks like a war zone, but it's the scariest environment for any adult or child to have to go through on any given day. So I'm off-script now because I've kind of heard what other people have been asking for, and I can appreciate all of that, but until we make our city a place where people want to live, all these other things really don't matter. And anyone who knows me know for all my life I've been in this mode of move back, so I want everyone to ask themselves, who's here asking the council, do you live here? I know you may be giving, but I want, we need to live in our city. We need to make our city representative of who we are when we walk out the door, someplace that we want to go, someplace that we feel comfortable walking around. I'm not sure what's going on with the city budget or with demolition money or people who are supposed to cut grass, but I do know that the power in this room can turn around how our city looks so that we want to live here and we want to attract people. We have a Saginaw promise, and that basically says, if you go to school here and you live here, you can get two years of college pay for. But who wants to live here? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robert Lee Ramsey. Do we have Robert? All right. Our next speaker is John Ayala.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city councilmembers, staff, and fellow citizens. I am John Ayala with the Mexican-American Council located at 1537 South Washington. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Our modest ARPA proposal would provide children and teens with diverse educational and cultural activities. We are here tonight to ask that the MAC Center be included in the grouping for community centers and youth development. This would pave the way for the Mexican-American Council to join with such noted agencies as the First Ward Center and the Holden Jones Neighborhood Association, as reported in the advisory report. Our request for inclusion in this category is rooted in our desire to help fulfill the main goals recommended by your advisory committee. We are positioned to be a hard-working and dedicated teammate in the outreach to the young people who hold the keys to our future as a community. It is important to understand, we hope to complement the aforementioned agencies in their efforts to reach our young. Our effort is not redundant effort. Our doors will be open to all, but we believe we are well-positioned to reach a demographic that is very diverse, not easily identified or represented. It is vital not only to guide children in their own cultural heritage, but to share that heritage with others, and in that sharing, we learn about others. We believe that shared experiences are the foundation of a caring community. Eliminate the fear of the unknown, and diverse groups successfully work together. The other speakers have briefly offered some examples of the impact of the MAC Center. A modest share of these federal funds would allow the Mexican-American Council to demonstrate its mission of turning lives in a positive direction, beginning with the youngest among us. The MAC would serve as a model for the collaboration of other projects within your category of community centers and youth development. Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker is Terry Alexander.
I'm just here to talk about basically the same thing I was here to talk about last time, the abandoned houses and abandoned lots. I think it's a big issue, and I understand that you guys have AARP funds and COVID funds, and I know that you guys know what happened on one of the abandoned lots. I shouldn't even have to bring that up, but I think it's very important and very crucial that you guys take care of them and get it done. And that's the only thing I'm here to talk about. I've run crackheads out of these abandoned houses right around the corner from my house, and I shouldn't have to be out there doing the police job. I'm a citizen, and these houses should be either boarded up, they should be bulldozed down and picked up later. You guys shouldn't be out there cutting curbs, doing anything to these houses except getting them ready for demolition. Everything else you're doing is a waste of time. That's all I'm here to say. You guys know what you should do. Take care of your business.
Williams. All right. Leslie Gregory? Leslie?
Leslie. Okay. Hello, I am Leslie Gregory. I live at 1021 Court Street. My opinion is that you should keep the three-minute time limit on comments. These meetings are already painfully too long. All speakers should get to the point and make their point. Please keep speaker comments at three minutes. Another opinion of mine that you may not have asked for, signup time. We do not need people crashing these meetings. Everyone needs to do their homework and be prepared. That includes signing up before 1:00 on the day of the meeting. This necessary step is not a hindrance, but an aid to making our opinions heard. Finally, I talk with a lot of my neighbors and past residents that are now residents of the township, asking why they no longer live in Saginaw, many different reasons, but common amongst them is their opinion of city government and how it works. They have long memories of every misstep made by city council. They may love Saginaw, but they mistrust what city council does based on their memory of some blunder, misdeed, giveaway intended or unintended that has harmed the city and its citizens. its citizens back in the day. One awe shizzles, cancels out ten attaboys. It seems that the biggest impediment to rebuilding citizens' trust is the obliteration of all the attaboys you all have attained with one stupid action committed by a council member. I think council is doing a great, good job, but I implore all council members to keep residents' respect of City Council by being on their best behavior at all times toward all Saginaw-eeans. Thank you.
Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
Council members, you have three minutes as well to speak. We will begin tonight with Councilwoman Lamar Sylvie. Celia.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening. Thank you for coming and viewing, seeing what your city council leaders are doing. I don't have any announcements, well, I do have announcements, but I'm going to skip my announcements for today, and I'd just like to say again, thank you so much for coming to City Council. Definitely, I heard what you were saying, and I'm praying, and I'm looking over 409 proposals to make sure I make within myself correct decisions that's going to impact the city of Saginaw and its residents. Thank you very much. You all have a blessed rest of the day.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for all of our public speakers tonight. In full transparency, everyone knows that we, the proposals that we are looking over, the mayor has charged some of us with kind of concentrating and focusing on certain areas. One of my areas has been, is youth development, and at the last council meeting during my three-minute remark, I asked for those that are seeking proposals for youth development that I would like to speak to, the youth, you know, to see what they think about ARPA funds and how funding should be used. It's been two weeks. I haven't had one contact from the youth from any agency, and I find that interesting since all the adults are coming and asking for all the money, but the youth have shown no interest because more than likely, they don't know what's going on like you all do. So, again, I ask that if you have, if you're interested in, or you put in a proposal, please, I would like to speak to some of our youth in regards to what their agency needs, how it can help their neighborhood, their fam, whatever. That's what I'm asking for. Brother Bobby, you and I have known each other for 30 years, so I already know you're going to reach out and you're going to set something up. I know that's going to happen. You weren't here at the last one, but I know it's going to happen now. So I appreciate you and what you do and what you have done for as long as I've known you. And that's all that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Housewoman Bench.
Well, I don't want to repeat too much of what's been said already, but I do appreciate hearing from everyone. I know the Mexican-American Council and Union Civica contribute many wonderful things to our community, and I hope you guys know that you have not been outside of our minds in this deliberation process. I would say Mr. Alberto back there, he, I don't know where he finds the energy to do the things that he does, but I am with you 100% on arts being a loss. We have so many people who are turning to negative outlets, and it's because we aren't taught how to be creative, whether we're good at it or not, having creative outlets, whether it's music through places like Major Chords or art programs like that, they're very important, and I hope that my colleagues feel the same way when the time comes to make those designations and whatnot. But, and the two people I wanted to mention, I left, about blight, I've been working with Mr. Alexander on some of the county-owned properties that are a problem in his neighborhood, and unfortunately, with the timeline for the land bank, they're not tearing the houses down as quickly as I think a lot of the neighbors would like to see. And I would, you know, also extend this to Ms. Webster. She, her husband is on our county commission, as she had mentioned, and most of those properties are county-owned properties, so I would hope and pray that she's having those conversations at the county board level and also with her husband while she has his ear, because I completely agree with her that we have to do something about our blighted properties. It's not a good thing for our neighborhoods, it's not a, it's a tax on people's mental health, it's many, many bad consequences that occur when our neighborhoods are allowed to be run down. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sherja.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yohermosa tambien. Just wanted to, so I definitely want to thank all of our public speakers for coming out tonight, and especially to those representing the MAC. It is the rich culture, the passion, and the legacy that is most important in this community, and it's not just our, our people that have been affected, it's been everyone across the board, because I've never heard of the MAC turning anyone away. So, not only do you provide technology and education, food, recreation, you're a support for many people who don't have it, so thank you to everyone to come, that came out tonight to speak on it. I too am in agreement regarding blight. Hopefully, people are also reaching out to the commissioners and the county to plead their case as well. We can only do so much, but all of us together can do so much more. Just also want to give a shout out that Listen to the Music is happening September 19th from 5:00 to 8:00 at the MAC, so please come out. And then also, just as the weather changes, holiday seasons are coming, please support local. We have a lot of businesses, a lot of individuals that are investing into our city. The SCDC provides a lot of financial support, but again, our pocketbooks can provide that support as well. That is all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman, look, I'm drawing a blank. Councilman Ostas, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Good to be back. I was traveling for work at the last meeting, so I was not here. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and speaking. It was nice to get a chance to talk to you, Bobby, before the meeting. I cannot say enough about what the MAC Center does, reiterating what my colleagues have already said. Alberto, I've actually attended some of his events. He had a great art event that was there for the kids, and it was really good to see them come out. Councilwoman Bench makes a good point that due to lack of funds in the high schools and stuff, we've lost those programs for those students, and so we've lost, you lose that creativity and just a different sense of the mind that can work. So again, thank you for everything that you're doing. I am aware of what goes on at the MAC Center, and I look forward to coming for a tour and having lunch soon. Friends of Hoyt Park, same to you. You've provided something for our city that families can have fun in the wintertime with sledding. I was a kid, and I enjoyed sledding myself a lot of times. Probably nearly broke a lot of bones, but, because I was always fooling around, but thank you again for everything that you provide for the city. Even in the summertime, there's been some huge events there recently with kickball, and all the softball games are back, and it's good to just kind of drive down Washington and just see that excitement and things that are taking us. So thanks for everything that you're doing for our city as well. To Ms. Forbes, I know she's out in the hallway, this is a big step for the Powder Street Station. I have been rooting for this for years, redevelopment of it. The group that's been taking care of the station for years, just hats off to what they've done, but now there's even more people that are involved, more people that are on their board, and for the first time, I'm optimistically watching this thing move forward. So thank you to everybody that is working on that station. To Ms. Webster, I know she stepped out of the room, blight is very much a problem. I think when we look at the city of Saginaw and we look at our history, somebody mentioned some of the decisions that were made in the past weren't always the best decisions. One of them was voting on a tax cap. So I just recently was talking to a Bay City Commissioner. We're tapped, our tax cap is $3.8 million in the general fund. They are running over a $20 million general fund to keep, to put their city forward. So when you look at the taxable values in our city and how they've been suppressed and depressed for years trying to stay under that cap, we've lost a lot of services, we've lost the parks in the neighborhoods, we've lost the group centers, and those neighborhoods have changed. So not only is that one of the variables that has happened, it's just that lack of funding that we've also lost, that we've lost so much in this city. So I'm hoping that with some of the programs, even with ARP, because we've been having some conversations, that there are some things that we can put forth, because I look at blight in two ways. You can either knock it down if it's too far gone, or try to get a program in place like Detroit's doing right now, where they're actually working with their county land bank and acquiring properties, rehabbing those properties, and then selling them at cost, put them back on the tax rolls, because once you lose a home, then you have to pay more in your water bill, you have to pay more in your trash bill, because you're losing everybody that shares that cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Saginaw. It's great to see everybody. First, I want to say thank you to Victorious Believers Ministry. They had me over at their place on Saturday. It was a father's count panel and discussion, so I was there with Coach Taylor from Saginaw High, and we were kind of talking about what it's like to be a father. The first question that got asked was, what did you feel the first time you held your son? And I didn't think about that question since I first held my son. So it was, it was a great conversation. Also, Judge Trice was there to talk about legalities and expunging, and I think, I'm hoping that we're going to have more, but it was great to be part of that. After that, I went to the Taco Fest, right? We do do tacos well. But that was over, that was over on Bay Road. It was great to see people there, you know, kids having fun at the bounce house. There's a lot of money raised for a good cause, and thanks to Larry Rodardi and everybody that had put on that, that event. Right before I got here, there was a discussion or a speech by President Biden about cancer moonshot and how to reduce cancer by, cancer fatalities by 50% in 25 years. A lot of my family have been taken by cancer, have been affected by cancer. My mom's a breast cancer survivor, and so they're looking for data and additional kind of conversations at the local level. So if anybody has anybody that's been affected by cancer, please go to www.wighthouse.gov/cancermoonshot.com, and you'll be able to contribute to what they're trying to do there. And that's very reminiscent of what President Kenny had, Kennedy had said about traveling to the moon. At the time, we didn't have the resources to do it, but they got there, right? So, and then last, on a personal note, we have a champion among our midst. Councilman Williams finally got his, he shot, I think, a 97?
79.
Ah, I did. So I knew it was 79, I just wanted him to correct me, but congratulations to you. That's amazing. I'm glad that you are a champion among us. So thanks so much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to our public speakers. Thank you to, for sharing about the Hoyt Park. I think that is an amazing, I think we just had an amazing event for the schools playing kickball at Hoyt Park. So thank you for sharing these photos and just the support that you all need. Thank you to the MAC coming out, sharing. I knew, I knew I was in for a treat when I saw the Delgados on the back. So I'm glad to see them, and I'm honored and blessed to be able to have shared some time with them, as well as Bobby. Bobby, thank you. I mean, you have been a mentor and a wise counsel, so I'm glad to hear what you all are sharing, and please know, as council members, we are doing our due diligence. Even though I have my own personal feelings of processes and things like that, we are going through these 400 and some odd proposals to hear from the community, to make sure as council members, we're just not making a decision, but we're taking wise counsel to hear from our community and the needs of our community. So please know, even, I know a lot of things can be said, I even had to take off work just so I can be quiet and be still. There's a lot of noise, but please know that we are working, we are taking our time, because this is very serious. This is, for some, it's life or death. So I don't take this lightly, that what we are doing. So please know that we are giving our due diligence, and I know I am, I'm praying by the whole thing, because I want to make sure we are making the best decision for our community. Thank you, Jamie, as well as our public input and about our blight. The one thing I do want to share, this is, welcome to our students. I didn't say that at our last meeting. Our students are back in school. Please, if you can, find some time to find a young person, just to encourage them, give them a piece of candy, give them something. The more and more that I work in higher education and work with youth, I'm realizing that what we had back then, these young people do not have. And so please, if you can make time, just an encouraging word, the levels of anxiety is something I've never seen before, and it's easy because of social media, but our children are dealing with serious anxiety. It's not, some things I thought you can shake that off. No, they can't. So if you can, encourage a youth whenever you see one, someone who's in a higher education, if you know an older relative, everyone's going back to school. Encourage them, and take some time to be still, to be quiet, and just to listen, because you need to make sure if your mind is not there and your anxiety is high, we're keen to make some interesting decisions. So most of all, please, please, please take care of yourself, citizens of Saginaw. We're continuing to work, but take care of yourself. And the last thing I want to share is September 17th at 7:30, I'm going to butcher it because I can't roll my Rs, but it is Flor de Talloche? Am I saying it right? Okay, all right, this Saturday at 7:30, please be there. There are still tickets available.
I have to laugh. You know, sometimes I walk in this chamber, and I walk in and it's empty, and when the chairs are full, I'm excited, because I know either you're coming to bar me out, us out, or you're coming with some good news. Tonight was good news. All of the public speakers who spoke tonight, you need to trust and believe. It's taking us a while to get to the ARPA dollars because we want to do it right. We don't want anybody slighted. We know how it used to be, and my thing with, it used to be good, no, it didn't, because if it was good, it would still be here. We want to make it better. We're talking about brand new right now. We have an opportunity in our city, and I'm going to say it again, we, not me, we have an opportunity to move forward, and the only way we're going to move forward, y'all, is if we work together. There can be no more silos. You can't be over here, you can't be over here, we got to come in the middle, and we got to meet. There's so many proposals. I have that big 600 and some page, Monique is right. That's a lot of reading. I've been reading on this book for almost a week, and I'm still maybe a fourth through it, because you want to make sure that you're doing the right thing. Mr. Refhauser, the MAC Center, I don't have to tell y'all, I know what you represent, and in order for us to do this right, we got to take our time. I know people want us to go right now. Right now is not the time, because we need to figure out how we're going to make this thing work so that it can go beyond 2026. This is not just a one-shot deal where we give you money and we go away in 2026. That's not what this is. The government said we have to have sustainable programs beyond that point. I'm not here to give anybody a lecture, but I am going to ask you all to do this for me. I need you just as bad as you think I need you. I need you, I really do. I need you to come. I need you to speak up. I need you to stop only speaking up when it's at your convenience. Blight is a problem. I live in a neighborhood, what, five blocks from where the little girl got killed? It's a problem. It's a problem at them corners. We decided, and I'm not saying you got to do that, we decided in our hood, we're going to cut it on down. We get the city to come cut it one time, and then we take it from there. I knew it was going to happen. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the manager.
Mr. Matt.
Thank you, Madam. I do thank everyone.
Can we take one minute in case people? Want to transition? And y'all really missing the good part, because you give me a here update.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Mr. City Manager, you sure know how to clean out a room. You know how to clear a room out, I keep telling you that. I keep telling you that. I'm sorry. See, that was so much easier to wait a minute and then it happened. I don't know if people want to come in or not. All right, Mr. City Manager, you filling the room back up.
It's too bad they left because I was going to mention something that does impact them. But I did want to say, and Larry's still here for Friends of Hoyt Park, the report from the committee, just because they listed groups in there, that doesn't mean they're going to be funded by council. And if a group wasn't listed, it doesn't mean they're not going to be funded by council. That's a council decision. And when we first set up the committee, initially weren't supposed to select projects anyway. So, that's not an indicator of who's going to be funded or who's not going to be funded. And the second thing is, and I know council members will bring that back to the Mexican-American Council too, is if organizations can show us the impact that they have on the youth, if it's a youth program, if you're going to tell me we serve 3,000 children a year in services, that I think is going to have an impact on council because you're showing that success. And Friends of Hoyt Park, I know, can do that as well because, as Larry mentioned, they have raised over $2.5 million for that park. And that's impressive. And I know the Mexican-American Council also has capital upgrades. I don't know if that's in their proposal, but they do have that at the House as well. So, those kind of things, I think, have an impact on that leverage of being able to gain more funding, leverage funds coming in from other sources. So, I think that'll be something that council does look at. Another thing I wanted to mention about the ARPA funding, and as council members go through the proposals, you'll likely see a lot of businesses that are putting in proposals. And we know that ARPA is not intended for new business startup. So, I encourage all of the people that did submit that to please follow up with the SEDC. And if there are people that you can refer if you see that, especially to Ms. Jones, she can get them in the right place. We may be looking at changing some things with SEDC to make it more accessible. And I will mention that we do have a number of financial institutions in the city that do have money to lend to small businesses, particularly with a focus on diversity and social equity. So, they're looking to push that money out. So, if you know people are looking to start small businesses, there are some resources out there right now that they could get. We also did receive word on the National Opioid Settlement. If you recall, council voted to participate in that some time ago. So, they're now getting ready to push out the shares of that. I think less than maybe we all had considered it might be for Saginaw. It's about $18,000 for the first year. You do have to use that for opioid intervention or prevention, treatment, recovery, harm reduction. Initially, I think a lot of cities are going to be using that to increase their capacity of using Narcan. Whether we, I believe all of our police officers have it. We may have moved that into fire. If you all know, fire department does also respond to cardiac calls. Oftentimes, those are not actually cardiac, but they are drug-related. So, it would be beneficial to have them and potentially more training. But we'll be researching that more. I think it's an 18-year, I believe, 18-year payment. So, cumulatively, it will be more money over the years. But maybe it's an opportunity to work with the schools and the county. Part of that education can be in the school system. So, maybe we can help with the programming there. I can tell you from the information that I get from Chief, from his command staff, and I know Councilman Williams can tell you, the number of people whose lives are saved by Narcan by the police officers is astounding. Those guys, that has really been something that police officers have used and gotten trained on. And I think they've saved a lot of lives in this community, which also lends to the fact that we do need some of those intervention and programs and to get to the youth so that we don't have that issue. So, we'll continue to research that. And with some of the talk about blighted properties and vacant lots, I do want to mention tonight, and we'll try to push out this information more. But you know that Mayor Moore and Councilman Ostache are on the Planning Commission, and they're working on the master plan now. But we are already moving forward in the northeast neighborhood with making side lots available. So, that's something that hasn't been done for years. So, Cassie Zimmerman and Bob Goleen, who is our, Bob's our planner, and Cassie works with the Planning Commission, the Historic District Commission. They have already had discussions with the Saginaw County Land Bank about selling side lots in that northeast neighborhood. And still going to have the requirements that we have all over the city, that it's a homeowner and taxes are current and the property is kept up. But I think they'll be making those available to the homeowners in that area. There are blocks that the Land Bank owns, all or majority of properties within the area. But there are a lot of them where there are lots that are next to houses that are vacant. Or not vacant, they're occupied and owned, occupied by the owner. So, there will be upcoming opportunities for them to purchase those. And we're also within that same area. Bob and Cassie have been talking to the Land Bank to clean up some of those larger portions that are owned by the Land Bank, starting with the Long Swas on Wadsworth in North Washington. And hopefully, that will make it attractive for development. And if not, it still cleans it up and makes it better for our gateways in the city. So, that should help with some of the vacant areas there. And, Madam Mayor, that concludes the management update. Oh, I'm sorry. I have one more thing. I'm sorry, Mayor. I didn't have it on my sheet, but I do want to mention, because this is the next to last meeting, that Darren Jerome, our Director of Neighborhood Services and Inspections, is retiring at the end of this month. So, I wanted to thank him for his years of service. He's been with the city for 25 years. Started with plumbing and mechanical inspector in the city. And those of you who have followed some of this will know that all of the employees in the inspections Division helped start SCENIC, which is our code enforcement team. We used to have, I think, two code enforcement officers, and they were the only ones that worked in the city on these issues. That changed, put every inspector into SCENIC, which works on blight issues, cleanup, enforcement. So, Darren has been instrumental in getting that set up over the years. And I think back when they first set it up, they did go all over the state of Michigan, showing other cities what they're doing. So, I wanted to mention that tonight. Our next meeting is his last meeting, and we'll miss him in the inspections Division.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for the city manager? Yes, Councilwoman.
Oh, thank you so much, Mayor. Mr. Morales, you said 18,000 a year for the prevention of opioid?
That's just our allocation. So, you're limited on what you can do with it. It's outlined in the settlement, but it is treatment programs. It's going all over the country. So, I mean, all local units, the state, tribal government, cities and counties. So, they have a vast array because some places do provide treatment services in the local unit. So, it's primarily for prevention and treatment and education.
Okay. And the other part with that is, are there any other funding that can match that or go with that to maybe make that more viable?
Saginaw County is getting funding. I believe they're on the list. I'm not sure what their funding level is, but that's one reason why I mentioned the County-City-School Liaison Committee. Because if we can pool some of that money and get the programs to the youth, I think that's where you can make a good impact, too.
Thank you.
I'm going right to left. Mr. Copeland, you had your hand up, didn't you?
Thank you so much for the recognition, Mayor Moore. Manager Morales, two questions for you. Would it be possible to get any type of information on the vacant properties owned by the county and owned by the city? Because I think hearing this, it would give support to the community, saying a lot of this is not owned by the city. So, if possible, if we could get any information saying what, when we look at blight, what's owned by the city and owned by the county? And the second question I have is, thank you to Mr. Jerome for his time with the city. Will the next person in the spot, or will this be an open search for his replacement?
We're posting the position. Yep. So, it'll be open to the public since it's a department head-level position. And we will be changing it to be more of a, so right, historically, actually, the last two have had a lot of focus on inspections and code enforcement. My vision for the position is to transition that to be more of a planning and urban development and economic development position. So, that's how we'll be posting it. Right now, if, a number of you recall, we didn't have any planning department for a long time, years. And part of our discussion, we worked with MSU, Yolanda, what's the name of that? Land use, I think it's.
The Land Conservancy at MSU Extension.
So, they did recommend, for a city of our size, we should have a planner. So, that's when we worked with council and we added Bob Goleen as our planner. It's a lot of work for one person. And I'd like to see kind of an overall planning strategy, whether it's business attraction, economic development. Right now, if you're all familiar, Saginaw Future, we have a contract Saginaw Future for Economic Development. Here at the city, I'm the main point of contact. The mayor is on the Saginaw Future Board as well. But I'd like to bring at least one other person in on those meetings at the city so that we can have more of a focused effort on that. And I was talking to the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem today. And there are resources, like I mentioned, at some of the banks for small businesses. But we need to help create that space for small businesses to go into. And we can do that, I think, downtown, Old Town, and our other corridors. We have an opportunity here with ARPA to do some of that, that we've talked about. When you're getting the small business loan from the SEDC or a bank, you might be, you might get $50,000 or $60,000. That's not enough to rehab a building, but it's enough to start your business. So, how can we kind of do that more long-term strategic planning on filling in businesses to our neighborhoods and our downtown core?
Going back to my right. Councilwoman Bench.
Okay. I had three things, and I forgot the second or third one. But anyway. I can only get two. Okay. So, they're just comments, but I just want to say to Darren Jerome, thank you so much because he, I know he's not in here, but he's probably watching on one of the TVs outside. I just wanted to say thank you to him. He has been fantastic in his role. And I know that I have been able to do my job as a council member much more efficiently because I've been able to have him help me with constituent complaints and things like that. And I'll tie, okay, I remember the second thing. I'll tie, I'll make it one. So, in reference to what George said and the Land Bank, I can tell you right now, residential properties, if it is an empty lot or a residential property, it's theirs, not ours. We have a handful of commercial properties. And we don't have nothing residential. I can tell you that much. And that's all I have.
We trying to be respectful. I'm going to come back to her because I know she got it. It's burning. Now, hold on that thought on this end. I don't know which one was first, Flores or Bill, because I'm going to go back and forth.
For the ARPA community involvement, one of the questions on that questionnaire was how many people do you anticipate helping? Some of those answers were either precise or ambiguous, right? So, how are we able to track that progress? Or would there be a process that people would, recipients would be able to go through?
For future impact, I think that's kind of difficult for the organization to say, unless they're basing it on their past services, which I, what I would envision is when we start to move through this, particularly if there are organizations that council is really interested, or you see a proposal that you're really interested, and there's consensus to move that forward, maybe we meet with that group to get an idea about, okay, you provided services in the past. Do you have the statistics to show us how many kids you impacted? Is that what you utilize to make the forecast here? Because if it's a brand-new program, I think it is difficult to say how you're going to, how many kids you're going to impact or youth. But I know, you know, you may see, and I'll just take Friends of Hoyt Park since they're here, and maybe you could touch base with them afterward. But I'm sure that they can have the data to show you that this many kids skate there in the wintertime. We move this many softball games through so you can get an idea about how many kids. But I think there's going to be some follow-up necessary once you move those projects forward.
Yeah. I was looking at the MACS application. It was 100 to 125 is what they estimated. I know it's probably more than that. So, just try to figure out how to record that. It's going to be an important part of the process. And then also, are we no longer talking with Dr. Scorson? Or we haven't been since Skynet, correct?
So, we did reach out to Dr. Scorsoni. I'm sure you all heard that he has a new position at Michigan State. And I think that's occupying a lot of his time currently since he's.
No, he had stepped down on the ninth.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he's just back to faculty, so that's why I asked the question.
Okay. Yeah, he may, we'll reach out to him again. Because he's, one of his primary messages to us when we first got the money, and I know he was working with some other local units through Michigan State, was to look at population increase, focusing on population like that. So, he may have some ideas. So, I know Yolanda's worked with him quite a bit in the past. So, we'll reach out to him again.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on this end? Annie. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bench. I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'm not mad.
Your third question.
It wasn't a question. It was a statement related to my last statement. So, I apologize for bouncing off of that topic, but.
Hold that thought.
I did. I held it very hard. Okay. So, I also wanted to mention, in addition to what the mayor or manager was saying about the northeast neighborhood, with the sale of the side lots, I know that the Land Bank manager very enthusiastically reached out to me and let me know that he had had that meeting with them. And I know that for a fact, he's worked his way through all of the backlog of applications on those properties. So, those properties are available. You just got to apply for them. And that's all I wanted to say.
Councilwoman Ostache.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Manager, you spoke about the opioid and the money that we're getting there, too. All I want to do is make a comment about that because you mentioned harm reduction, and you mentioned the county. And if we all remember, there is a program that, actually, last year, we made some changes here in the city ordinances. And our city staff worked to get all that prepared for us to be part of that county program through the Michigan Health Department, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. But that could be a great alignment, I think, with this because they do work with the opioid crisis. Also, too, in my own neighborhood, in the Cathedral District on Hoyt, just a few blocks from my house, the Hearth Home is also working with that. I do want to make that known. So, that's another center that you can drop into. Narcan, Narcan Training, they've actually helped me. I actually carry Narcan with me as well. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment. It is so refreshing to hear how we all got dreams and hopes. It is so refreshing to hear how we all got dreams and hopes. I'm a dreamer. So I can envision what it needs to look like, but I can't do it without you guys or these guys up here. And we gotta be in sync in doing it. And one of the things that the city manager said, I just wanted to comment on it, is when he talked about data, you're gonna need some data. I mean, a new program has no data. We've got to have a way to measure how we getting, letting this money go. If you don't have data, we can't give you nothing. I mean, we could send you to, and let me stop that, because I've already said, people and applications that I know, I plan on sending them through SEDC or through CBDG, which is Community Block Grant. Or I'm going to send them to Better Business, so, I'm not Better Business, but to, out to Saginaw Valley, so we can get a business plan done. Because you got to have those things, you need those things to go to the bank to get money. So I really do appreciate you saying it out loud. I'm hoping that everybody heard it. That's why I told the group when they cleared out, you're missing the best part? You're missing the best part? Because you actually get to hear, we are ready to move forward, but we got to be cautious when we do it. So city manager, I appreciate the update, even though we didn't talk about it this morning. I apologize to you, we talked about everything but your update. So I do apologize. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor, another quick comment. I'm excited, thank you, Darren, if you're in the room or outside for all your service. He's been very accessible when needed, and when Tim would make him available for us as well. But I'm excited to hear about the new position and how you're working forward that, with that, because we've already spoke, you know my ideas on that, very, very optimistic with economic and community development within the city. So I'm excited to see what we're doing, thanks.
Are you done, sir? All right, then, Madam Clerk?
Our next item is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage and on SG TV Channel 191. I need a motion to, I need a motion, leave a room for exceptions. It's been moved to second. Do I have any, do I have anything that I need to have? Lord, I forgot that quick, I'm getting old. Any extensions, I'm sorry. So we're good to go. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We are now to the board, commission, and committee reports.
Do we have any committee reports? Yes.
Just a quick comment. Mr. Manager spoke about the Planning Commission tonight, you and I both sit on. Next meeting is going to be here in the council chambers on the 27th, 6:00 PM. So if anybody would like to attend, watch us on YouTube or watch afterwards on YouTube again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Our newly rescheduled city-county-school liaison meeting is going to be held at the Board of Education next Thursday, September 22nd, at 5:30 PM. And since there's lots of ARPA discussion, it might not be a bad place to be.
Anyone else? I sit on a lot of boards, so we'd be here all night. So I just want to highlight when I get money. When I get money, then I'm the first one to holler, we got payday. Anybody else? Madam Clerk?
We have an appointment of board and commission members.
I need a motion, leave a room for exception. We have two appointments that we need to approve. It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
We are now to ordinance introduction. We have two on the agenda. The first being an ordinance to amend Chapter 153 zoning code of Title 15, land usage, by amending Section 153.543, action of the commission regarding historic resources threatened with demolition by neglect of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion to adopt?
To introduce.
To, I'm sorry, to introduce this ordinance. And it will be laid over.
Second?
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Yes.
Yep. What I would like to say is, thank you to the Historic District Commission for bringing this forth to the council. This is long overdue. It gives our citizens of this city a due process for due process through this, through your ordinance. Also to the city attorney for crafting this and doing a really great job. So thank you for putting this out there, and I'm excited that we could devote on this.
Any other questions? Comments? Let's call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk?
Our second ordinance is to create the Flint and Pear Marquette Potter Street Station, single entity, local historic district in the City of Saginaw to be added to the table of special ordinances of the City of Saginaw Code of Ordinances O-204.
I need a motion to adopt? It's been moved in support. This will also be laid over. Any comments, any questions? Yes, sir.
Knew I do. So again, thank you to the work that the Historic District Commission has done to do the study on the station. This opens doors for the station. As Ms. Forbes was speaking about earlier, I want, I see some of the Potter Street Station board members are here, so thank you for coming out tonight in support of this. So again, it's just an exciting thing. I know we tried, we talked about this for a long time. So it's exciting to see that hopefully my colleagues will agree that this will be the next single entity district, just like the temple, the Jefferson, and the Armory. Thank you.
Any more? Call for the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, all those opposed, say nay. Okay, I'm sorry.
We are now at miscellaneous business.
We have a conference coming up in October. I will not be attending in Muskegon. It's a Michigan Municipal League Conference. And I am normally to vote for Saginaw, or the mayor is normally to vote with an alternate. I didn't give what y'all before, and I needed to. But the recommendation that we said this morning at our meeting was, was that we would do the mayor pro tem, Michael Balls and Bill Ostash, in Michael's absence, to have a vote in the movement of how, and the municipal league is getting ready to go for the upcoming year. So I need somebody to make a motion to accept that, I'm sorry, I didn't do that. Okay, any discussion? If you want to know how I picked, and we did a rabbit in the hat, y'all, I just closed my eyes. Just pick the person, okay? So, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? So Michael will be the primary, our mayor pro tem Balls will be the primary vote. And Mr. Ostash, Councilman Ostash, you will be the secondary vote. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
I have a, oh, go ahead, oh, all right. I have a motion. I move to allocate up to one point, no, I'll, let me go back.
Get it right, get it right.
I move to allocate up to $1,275,000 in ARPA funds for demolition services and other maintenance activities at the fairgrounds for the Saginaw Housing Commission contingent upon the city, and the Saginaw Housing Commission entering into an agreement relating to the expenditures of such funds.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Yes, ma'am?
I would like to make a motion to set the topic for our first single-subject meeting on ARPA for housing and blight elimination. Date to be determined.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. And it was somebody else, who else had their hands up? Catherine, I did it all? Madam Clerk?
Motion to adjourn, second.
And do not move until we do this vote. Move! All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you all so much for coming.